...of Commerce, the school and the Wyndham Town Council has done the same. So I wanted to read that this evening. We will include it as part of our information for all of our meetings and so that we can be reminded of what we did pledge. So, "We, the Raymond Board of Selectmen, recognize the individual and collective responsibilities as leaders and representatives of our community. To this end, we pledge to conduct ourselves in a manner befitting those roles and duties. We pledge to encourage others to be the influence and to recognize that decisions matter." Thank you. Minutes of the previous meeting dated October 14th. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any suggestions, deletions, corrections? Sue, I did have one spelling correction on Sue Acardi. You would have no idea, but it's Acardi with an A as opposed to an O in the minutes. So if you could...
I think, I couldn't find my minutes. I'm sorry. I think Marghevaani, I think was spelled wrong, too.
Marghevaani, yeah.
Chiavio in I, I believe. So it was just...
Yeah. Kind of a welcome to town. Learn how to spell names, right? Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Four with one abstention? Non-citizens, non-resident. Joe pointed out that earlier I asked for a motion for non-citizens to speak and it should be non-residents, so I would like a motion to allow non-residents to speak.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. We should allow non-citizens to speak separately, right?
I don't know why that even exists.
For that one, we may need to get state of Clarence, though, right?
Yeah. So, all right. Thank you, Joe. First item of business tonight is the 2015 Sebago Lake Rotary Club Ice Derby request. We do have an application here with the board that has been filled out by the Derby, but I've also asked representatives to come and somebody give us an overview of this year's Derby. We have, well, Ingo, you're not on the list. Are you allowed to speak?
Yes.
All right. So we have...
Ingo speaks anyway, whether he's allowed or not.
Whether he's allowed to or not.
We have to have an inter...
So, George Bartlett, would you step up to the microphone and introduce the folks who are with you this evening? And state your name and your address, please.
George Bartlett, 106 Florence Cove Road, right here in Raymond. And I've been a member of the Sebago Lake Rotary Club now for, oh, since 1989, two weeks after Deborah joined as the first woman in our Rotary Club. So we have quite a history here, but the Derby has been great for us. I'd like to, the spokes, the actual spokesperson for the Derby this year is going to be Ingo Hartig, who also is a resident of Raymond. And Ingo has been also, actually, I think you were in the club before I was. You've been involved with the Rotary Club for a long time.
Thirty-one years.
Thirty-one years. That's a long time. So, anyway, we do have a long history and so forth, and so I'd like to introduce Ingo Hartig of the Sebago Lake Rotary Club.
Thank you. My name's Ingo Hartig. I live at Oaklatch Hills, 21 Oaklatch Road in Raymond. I'm here to request permission from the town fathers and mothers to hold another fishing derby next year, which the dates are February 14 and 15. We are, it's an ice fishing derby, we hope, and it's subject to ice. And what else can I tell you? That's it. Thank you.
Somebody else want to step up and give us a summary of last year and what was contributed to the community, just so we can get a perspective of what the Derby means?
Deb McPhail, and I'm 26 Granbury Pond Road in Raymond. I am the president this year and been involved in the Rotary for almost 25 years. Myself, along with a group of people, with Toby Pennels last year, ran the Derby. Success because we had ice and snow, and it was very successful. This year, we will not be having a snowmobile drag run. It's just too much, and we've asked possibly a snowmobile club, they wanted to take it on, and then they'd have to come to you folks, too. But we had several vendors. We had the people that, and Nicole, help me with the name of the people when we gave the fish away.
Oh, oh, and Hunters for the Hungry.
Hunters for the Hungry. Anybody that didn't want the fish, anybody that didn't want the fish, they left bags of fish and they ground it up for chowders and all that. It fed, I don't have the numbers, but fed thousands of people. So that was very helpful, too. That was new last year, too. So we plan on doing that again.
Wow. Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred people, so. Nicole DeJoy from Raymond, too, is over here. So George didn't introduce us.
Yes, that's right.
So, you know, it's going to be similar to the years past. We will have a meeting in January with the police department and the maintenance, all that, like we usually do, and we'll, it's going to be very similar. Polar Dip, we'll have the Polar Dip again. So that's basically it. Any questions?
Teresa?
How's that going to interfere with Valentine's Day on some people?
Some wives.
Well, exactly. While the husbands are out, they're going to say, "Well, you know what I mean? What about my dinner?" That type of thing, so.
We do want an idea, though. With the...
Oh, good.
With the new hotel hotel.
Oh, that's great, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Did you serve beer last year?
No.
Because that's always an annual thing you try.
We've talked about it, but we didn't do it.
You're not going to do it?
No, no, not at all. We don't need the liability. There's enough on the lake for the wardens to keep busy with, so.
Other questions while we have them here?
Was there a certain reason why you're not doing the drag?
Lot of work to do it and don't make that much money, to be honest with you. That's basically it. It's fun. I love it. Don't get me wrong. I love it, but we don't make that much money, so. And Toby really was the spearhead for that, so.
You raised money last year.
Mm-hmm.
How much? Did you donate? Do you remember, ish?
About, netted about $25,000, I believe.
Polar Dip did well over $50,000, close to $60,000 in Polar Dip alone.
And that's separate from us. That's Maine children's cancer. Polar Dip, they kind of ride on our coattails, but the Polar Dip does that, and for Maine children's cancer, it's great.
So in two days, close to $100,000 is raised, right here in Raymond.
Yeah, and of course, we have the Cumberland County Sheriff's Department help us, plus the volunteers for the traffic control, too, so. So, I don't, and we have all the wardens there. They'll all be there again. We have a meeting December 1st with IF&amp;W, too, so, to make sure everything is spearheaded right. But like I said, in January, we plan on getting together with all of you in the Cumberland County, like we did last year, to make sure we've got everything going right.
We do.
Yeah.
Nate, you have any concerns, any...
I don't. They're a great bunch of guys to work with. Women, too.
Great bunch to work with, they really are. It's very well organized.
No, you're great. You're very helpful. I mean, last minute, we get piles of snow and get a plow, and, you know, you never know. We just pray for cold weather and ice.
Oh, driving here, it was below freezing, so it's already getting chilly. It's good.
That's true. But we thank you all, too, for all your help and efforts, too.
Anything else you want to add while you're standing here?
Insurance. Insurance is through Rotary International. We do have insurance. We get that every year, so that's not a question, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from the Sebago Lake Rotary Club. Second?
Wait for public comment. Oh, that's okay. Anybody in the public want to ask questions or step up? Louise?
Louise Lester, Tenderly Lane. I'm just wondering if you're going to have any activities other than at Raymond Beach? Is this going to be a statewide fishing derby again? It's just going to be localized? Okay, and everything's going to happen at Raymond Beach?
We do have way stations at different locations, but as far as the main part of it...
Deb, can you step up to the microphone? If you don't mind repeating that.
It's just going to be at Raymond Beach. We do have way stations at different locations, but the main part of it will be right at Raymond Beach. No statewide derby.
The kids derby?
Kids derby, March 7th, my birthday, on Granbury Pond.
Okay.
So, go on. That brings up a point. In the past, and I think Nathan does this anyway, as a matter of course, but the Tassel Top Park has been plowed, it's plowed for fire access. So you're not advertising that as a location, but some people inevitably will discover it and want to utilize it. How do we handle that, Nate?
As far as the gate opening goes, and last year, Sue did it. Previous years, I always took care of it, opened it and...
So somebody will take care of it?
Yep, we'll make sure it's taken care of.
Okay.
We're doing, it's Cumberland County Ice Fishing Derby, so we're not going up to Kisa Lake like we did last year. We won't be doing that, so it's just going to be here.
Further questions, comments from the public? All those in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I hope for ice for you.
I do, too, and you're going to be away, so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, Raymond Village Library Annual Report. Your reputation precedes you, Nate.
Wow! Wow!
My name is Elisa Gifford. I live at 546 Webb's Mills Road, and I'm here this evening representing the Raymond Village Library and its Board of Trustees. I'd like to acknowledge our director, Sally Holt, who has come here on her day off to be with us this evening. You have in your packet our written annual report, pages seven through 11, I believe, in your packet. You're probably going to be most interested in page 11, which is the statistics for this year. Last year, we did a narrative report before this board, but this year, we'd like to show you a few highlights of this year's activities and services. So now I'm going to switch over here.
So make the discussion.
I'm really scared I'm going to press a button.
As you can see, we've added another day to the library's open hours. We've added a Thursday from 2:00 to 7:00 on top of our Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday days. On any day at any time, the library staff and volunteers are prepared to fulfill any and all requests that come in in person or by the phone. And here is our beloved longtime 20-year volunteer, Alice, at one of the new computers that was purchased through the Stephen and Tabitha King Grant. It's now used at the circulation desk, and the next moment, she is welcoming a new library In addition to our one-on-one services, programming for groups is an essential service. This year, adult programming was up over 40% and featured a lot of local authors or Maine authors. As you can see, there was one from Raymond, Carol Manchester. We also had an interesting program on how to use mobile devices of all kinds. A recent author who visited, Josh Christie, wrote a book called Brew Maine, and it's a history of craft beer brewing in Maine. I'm sorry you guys missed it because he brought free samples. Of course, children's programming is a big part of what the library does, and this particular one, the pajama storytime, is a favorite. It's funded from a grant from Friends of Maine Libraries, and as you can see, the dress code is pajamas. This year, there were over 72 participants in this program at the library. The children's storytimes that take place on Mondays and Wednesday mornings have a variety of activities associated with them. One of them was a dance instructor who visited. There is a regular visit from a reading dog once a month, and you're going to say, "Well, does the dog read?" No, the dog does not read, but it gives the children confidence and companionship as they're learning to read. If they miss a word, the dog's not going to care. It gives them sort of confidence as they begin to figure out how to read. Lisa Davison, our Youth Services Coordinator, is responsible for organizing all reading time activities as well as the summer reading program. And as you can see, reading time is also playtime. And if you've ever been there on a Monday or Wednesday morning, it is very noisy, with kids running around, but that's part of what being at the library is, is socializing, and it is a very social time for the parents as they bring the children in and discover that their child is not the only one to write with crayons on the wall during naptime. This summer's reading program was called Fizz Boom Read, sponsored by the Gorham Savings Bank. There were 108 participants who signed up, but the many, many more joined in over the summer during the other activities that were held there. The kickoff featured a lively and sometimes explosive demonstration. You can see, well, hopefully, there's a young man dressed in white sort of backed up to the building. He was from USM.
Math Science.
Math, he's called Math Science. Right. And as you can see, the kids were really getting into that. Although not specifically a kids' event, the first annual Raymond Village Library Bazaar featured games and crafts for kids, as well as music, food, and a variety of beautiful craft items that were for sale. It was organized by our, the board's co-chair. At the bazaar also, of course, being at the library, there was opportunities for reading. The co-chair is in the upper right-hand corner, singing and playing her guitar at the event, and the craft displays were outside the library, opposite the parking area. A Lego club has begun as a result of a donation of Legos valued at $500 by the Maine State Library. Interestingly, only 15 public libraries in Maine received this particular donation, and you can see how enthusiastically it has been received. They meet, yeah, once a month. An anticipated annual event is our plant sale. It's held the first Saturday in June. Of course, it's run by volunteers and stocked with plants from gardens in the area, residents. I think a local nursery or garden center also donates a few plants. During the four hours that this sale is run, the library realizes between $1,000 and $1,200. Another loved annual event is the book sale. Without community donations of previously loved books, the annual sale wouldn't happen. As you can see, we have hardbacks, paperbacks, games and puzzles, and even, there were quite a few vinyl records included this year. Of increasing importance to the library is the involvement of young people. This year, groups of students from the Jordan Small Middle School performed community service at various locations in town on Halloween Day. And in the upper right-hand corner is a group of teens that have gathered for what we call Game Day. It's held at various times through the year where teens can come and play non-video games at the library. Of course, the donation of candy to the library has become a tradition for Halloween. It is brought to the library and repackaged in smaller amounts and then distributed by volunteers like these children to homes along and around the main street area here in town who often have 400 or more trick-or-treaters visit on Halloween night. Raymond's Community Garden and the library partner as part of the learning experience for young children. Lisa Davison often incorporates growing season visits to the garden as part of the storytime. The Wyndham Raymond Adult Education Program is coming up with classes to offer at the library. I believe that program will be started up again in January. Other groups have begun meeting at the library. This is one of the newer ones, a knitting group. I believe it meets at least once a month. Is that right?
We're doing eight weeks right now to start.
Eight and eight week.
Yep.
As a result of this group, a lending library of knitting needles and crochet hooks has begun at the library. So anybody who wants to learn?
And there's free yarn.
Free yarn.
Six tubs of it.
That's even better. A really interesting and important science program that's offered each year partners with the PTO and the library with Chiuanki, and Chiuanki is an environmental education organization based in Wiscasset. Nearly 20,000 young people a year have access to science programs such as this. I don't know whether you can see it, but the young man's actually holding a baby alligator, so you can see the reaction from the people around it. Scales and tails is what this one was called. Dr. Seuss Night is also a very popular annual event that's held at the Raymond Elementary School around the theme of Dr. Seuss books. And you can see, there's all kinds of activities that go along with that one. One of our new collaborations is with the Casco Public Library and the Lunaca Land Trust that gave a grant to fund two nights of stargazing at Hacker's Hill. I understand one night it was kind of overcast, but the kids didn't seem to mind. We can't say enough about the cooperation between the library and the Raymond Fire Department in creating educational opportunities for young children that are fun in learning about the fire rescue department, about the crew, about the equipment, because, as you can imagine, to a small child, a lot of that is very intimidating. So being up close and personal is very important. The Raymond-Casco Historical Society and the Hawthorne Community Association continue to be important partners in spreading the word about events of interest to the community because of the upcoming Raymond Village Library Garden Tour to be held June 27, 2015. The final stop on the tour will again be at the Hawthorne House for its annual strawberry festival, featuring a special garden speaker. And of course, who doesn't love the community favorite and family favorite annual Christmas tree lighting, which will be this year, Sunday, November 30th, at 5:00, of course, at the library, featuring caroling by the middle school choir and, of course, a visit from Santa. Does anybody remember the leaning tree from last year? We've shown you some of the high points of our year. We hope your takeaway is seeing the important role the library plays in the community, fostering cooperation, collaboration, education. And of course, our last slide won't go, and just plain fun, but we didn't get that one. So, thank you very much. If I can find the last slide. Okay, Nathan, you want to try this?
Keep going.
It won't go. Are we running out of battery here?
It shouldn't be. It's more than half.
It should be. Well...
Your fault. You have to try.
You bring a truck in here. I can't get it in. All right, Sally has some things to add to, about fundraising, if I can figure this out.
Thank you, Elisa. That was a very good job. What I wanted to mention to you are the fundraisers coming up. We have a bake sale that will be coming up in December. I think it's December 4th that it starts.
Thank you.
Oh, you got her? Good. There she is. The basket sale will be starting November 23rd. People from in town donate items to put into a basket. We'll be together on Saturday, putting the baskets together, so if anybody wants to, between 10:00 and 2:00, they can come over and help make baskets, and we'll also have We also are going to put up on sale again long-sleeved t-shirts. I wish I had brought one. We had short-sleeved ones last year, and starting, you know, in a week or two, we've ordered them. We'll have some long-sleeved ones that we're selling. We also have raffles of a couple of baskets. One is a Downton Abbey basket. The other one has an antique soft doll in a red wagon. The one thing I wanted to say about the knitting group that we're having, what's happening in libraries right now is what's being called Makerspaces, and many, many things are happening all the way from media labs to 3D printing, to people just coming in and doing things together with the, with the, excuse me, with the knitting library that we're doing, the knitting needle and crochet library. We're also going to be knitting items, and one of the groups that we're thinking about knitting for is called Stitch Out Cancer. I think it's really important that the library, besides doing fundraising, that we do charitable things for other people if we possibly can, so we're going to be doing that. I'd really like to welcome everyone to come to the library. We have a great time there. We're trying to move forward and do some innovative things and just keep up with what's going on around the country and the world with the library. So thank you very much. Oh, another thing, Louise is coming to the library from 10:00 to 2:00 on Wednesdays and volunteering, and she took to it just like that. Did you have a question, Sam?
Oh, yeah. You mentioned 3D printing. What are you doing in that? I don't know.
Well, that's what's happening throughout the country in libraries. We would like to, at some time, be able to have a 3D printer. I think what would be really great is if we could get a 3D printer in the library somehow. There are some grants available out there, and I know there's been talk in the area about possibly having manufacturing using 3D printers, and one of the ideas that the trustees and I've had is to actually get one, have people learn about what 3D printing can do. Before long, 3D printers are going to be in people's homes. So, for example, if you can't find your hammer, you loaned it to somebody, say you loaned it to Nate or something. You can actually make your own hammer right there on the 3D printer and have one. They also have the First Car. I saw it on the Today Show probably about a month ago, where they made it completely on a 3D printer. So we're hoping someday to get a 3D printer. The materials to do 3D printing do take some money, but I'd love to see us have one so the community could come in and see what 3D printing is all about. So that's kind of a hope and dream we have, and maybe there'll be a grant out there sometime that we can afford to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments for the library?
I actually went to one of their things the other night with the girls. It was fun. They had an author there, and the kids were all in their pajamas, and all the kids got to see their friends, and the adults got to talk, and they had food, and it was a fun time.
Seventy-two people.
Was it really?
There were 72 people at that program.
Wow.
Way there. Yep, it's, the library is very busy. We're really running out of space, not only for bodies, but for books and computers and everything else, but it was really a fun time. The more noise, the more fun, the more people coming in, the greater the library is. It's just a wonderful place and a fun place to be.
I went to the one where the guy from the science, whatever it was, was making things that exploded and boiled over, and the kids loved it.
Math Science. Science and math are very important, and that's something we really try to focus on in the library, are those skills.
Well, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you for inviting us.
Nate, no, not Nate, sorry. Nancy, budget schedule. We go from fun to...
I know. Such a hard act to follow.
You were hoping it skipped over you, weren't you?
Yes.
I've just put together a very preliminary draft budget development schedule. I hope you had a chance to look it over and compare it with your... I hope you had a chance to look it over and compare it with your own calendars to see if it fits.
I'll throw the monkey wrench into it right from the start. How's that?
What, November 18th one you can't make?
November 18th I cannot make, yes. I cannot make February 23rd or March 2nd. Doesn't mean that we have to change it, but I'm just throwing it out because to move those two would be drastic. Because that's the whole presentation part. It's possible that I can Skype in. At least I could, you know, listen and watch, and I could probably do it live if we had enough planning or whatever. But, you know, I would offer that from my standpoint for those two nights. I'll make myself available to Skype in, so I don't have to change it unless somebody else has a conflict with those nights.
Well, those are Mondays too, so we don't yet know what the Budget Finance Committee's schedule is going to be, so.
Right. I understand that, and I know you were trying to put it together, but I'll just, I'll throw that out, so.
I won't know until we get closer to it.
Any other conflicts?
December 14th is a Sunday?
December 14th.
Yeah, but that's only for Dawn.
Dawn works Sundays.
Dawn's going to call the staff in on the 14th to...
Well, that stuff's all sent up by email anyway.
But you may want to change that to the 15th.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Or the 12th.
Yeah, either way.
12th is Monday, yeah. 12th is Friday.
Oh, the Friday. So change the 15th, oh, the 14th to the 12th.
To the 12th, okay.
Of December. Because we're planning on having our select board meeting on the 9th, right? December 9th. Anybody else have any?
It seems like there's a large gap from March 2nd to April 7th. Is that in case we need to throw another meeting in there, or?
That's always possible, but it's also to try to hit on a night where the Budget Finance Committee is meeting, as well as a night where you are possibly meeting.
You're talking March 2nd to April. So last year, we did have more meetings in that timeframe because we needed them.
And I'm sure this will evolve as we go along, because I don't yet know if the Budget Finance Committee will be meeting on the 12th.
I know last year, Joe, we added a meeting after the presentations, which were 23rd and 2nd. We added a meeting or a workshop to work on the budget before we got to the, when we actually voted on it. And I would anticipate doing that again.
Do we want to tentatively set a date for that, or do we want to just wait?
Probably should.
I'm not that idea.
Lana, you have a suggestion? So if the second half of the presentation is March 2nd.
Yep.
What works better for you, Lana?
March 10th is fine. If you want to stick to a Tuesday, or if you want to stick to a Monday, or?
I haven't gone for a while the first two weeks.
In March?
March.
Which definitely, so say March 23rd, 24th?
Yeah. That works better.
23rd.
You want to do a Monday or Tuesday, or what's better?
Tuesday's good.
Or an tentative workshop?
I'm good. Neither.
24th?
The 24th is a Tuesday.
Yeah. So we'll do a selectman's workshop, or do we want a more official than a workshop? Now a workshop would be good to discuss the budget.
Yeah.
And that would give staff time to make changes prior to the meeting on the 7th.
Wait, one second. Okay, so if we're going to have a workshop on the 24th, then we come back on the 7th to recommend the municipal budget. I mean, but how are we going to discuss with them what are, what we're talking about in the workshop? Are we going to have them show up?
Oh, they'll be invited.
Yes. Okay.
It should probably be a joint workshop, more than maybe.
More than maybe.
Yeah. Okay. That way they can go back and...
And we can, we can probably leave it open for 23rd or 24th. I know they like Mondays. So make it either of those two days. You can check with them, maybe with an email, not have to wait till the December meeting necessarily, but... So Joe, you said you're, are you going to be here on the 2nd? March 2nd?
Yes.
Okay.
Should we do something about the 23rd? So you were able to attend, or?
No, like I said, February 23rd and March 2nd are both bad for me, so, but I'm willing to Skype.
Joe, you're going to be here on the 23rd?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, if my technology guru will help me or make it possible, then I can Skype in. I'm comfortable with that.
I think I'm good on all the other things.
All right. Back to that meeting again. I'm still getting clarification on that.
Which one?
The 24th. Actually, our workshop. I guess I'm just thinking in my head, we're going to have a workshop, they're going to be presenting the budgets to us, we're going to be talking them over, we're going to give suggestions back to the department heads or whatever, even though they're going to be here. But aren't they going to come back with some kind of a presentation again to say this is what they've changed, what they haven't changed, before we make a recommendation?
Well, you could do that on the 7th, on April 7th.
Sure. So do all that then, and still recommend whether we like it or not, but if we don't like it, then what?
We have time.
All right, we still have time to give them...
You're going to get a presentation over two nights on what they would like to see. We're going to have a discussion on the 24th. We can have further discussion on the 7th, which we can still make changes to the budget, or if we have to schedule further.
You can still do it? Okay.
We'll know on the 24th if we have to add.
Okay.
But I think we ought to have at least the 24th at a minimum.
Yeah. I'm just saying, giving enough time to be able for them to either go back and add in, take out, whatever, and then still have it, so we're not crunched into having to make a quick decision.
Still leaves two weeks.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, Budget Committee's looking for April 13th, and we still got some squeeze time till the 22nd, when it's got to go to the printers.
Did Budget Finance give you that April 13th date?
No.
Okay, so that's just...
They haven't given me any dates.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can send this out to them now with our tentative and see if they can...
Yes. Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next item is Nate. Nate, I was hoping you could give us an update on the road paving bond expenditures and what we were able to accomplish before it got below freezing today?
Well, I put together a list of the roads that we paved with the bond money, started in the fall of last year. We've got Cape Road covered with a surface from town line to the, from the Casco Town Line to the end of the road.
How long is that?
It's just shy under five miles. It's like 4.8 miles. That was...
Five miles, 350.
What's that?
Five miles, 350, 70K.
Correct. That's only inch and a half surface.
Are you happy with that when it came out?
Oh, yes. That came out very well. We put down a half-inch shim the whole length of the road, and then we set back and paved it an inch overly. Gives you better compaction and a better ride in the end. And that number also includes, there's a lot of aprons we had to pave in. The handwork is a lot more money than just setting and paving.
What do you mean by apron?
Any road that comes out onto the main road, any private road, we try to pave in 10 to 15 feet saves on our, on our road. People pull up and they go to take off. If you're coming off from dirt on the pavement, it chews into the travel lane.
Every homeowner loves when you apron.
Yes. Yeah, we've started doing that on a lot of stuff now, because it saved our roads, it helps us with erosion control. And it's a little expensive, but I think the payoff on the other end is worth it. We also did Hawthorne Road. That one, we ground it up, put binder down, and surfaced that this year. And we widened. When you come out to 302, we added a turn lane to the right-hand side there. It's always been a problem with savory yards, summertime traffic. It's been kind of on the docket for 10 years to do, and it was fairly inexpensive, but I think the payoff on that was quite well. Plains Road, we did last fall from Route 85 to 121. That's just base surface pavement. We did all the erosion control and the ditching and paved just the base on it last year. Valley Road was our big project this year. We did 8,300 feet of Valley Road. Leaves a little over 3,000 feet left to do next year. That was a lot of digging, quite a few culverts, a lot of erosion control. We added, it was a little over 400 yards of material to the base of the road, tried to get it shaped up. It was pretty bad.
Did you find any areas where you had to move your culvert from where it was? Is it existing leak?
No. We were able to maintain all the existing drainage. We didn't have to get any easements or, we lucked out on that. We were able to stay within the confines of the right-of-way, which is a big goal, a big thing, I think. We don't have to step on anybody's property or upset anybody, I hope.
Nate, 400 yards. How many trucks? Can you put it in layman's terms?
Well, our big truck hauls 14 yards. They haul that...
That's a lot of trips.
That's a lot of trips. We hauled out a gray for that material, right out of Grover's, right there by the public works garage. So actually not that bad of a haul from there to Valley Road, pretty straight. We hired one truck from P&amp;K to haul with us. Put our three trucks on and one from P&amp;K. We've got a very short period of time there from when the road's ground to when you're putting down that material to when you've got to get it paved. We pulled that off in a week on that, which is pretty good. A lot of it was, we put our grader on to do the knockdown and the rough grade, and then FR Carroll was our contractor, and they did the finish grade. So they were able to start the finish grade while we were down on the other end, roughing stuff in and getting stuff laid out for them. Quite a few trips. I wouldn't dare guess, I'd have to look at the paperwork, how many trips they took. It was a long, long two days. Tenny Hill, we also did the hill on Tenny Hill last fall, in the fall of 13. That was a little short section from Mount Road up to the top. With all that, we spent $973,308.32 to date. That includes paving, tree work, subcontractors, material, and $18,000, or a little over, little under $19,000 on engineering and prep work for Main Street. We hired Simego Tech to do a boundary right-of-way and draw up a set of plans, and we're going to sub that job out down to Village. Glitten Paving actually got the bid. We ran into some design problems with the culvert, the catch basins, that put it too far into the falls, so we held off, and we're going to do it in spring. That leaves us $973,208.32 to go forward with next year. And we should probably expend all that next year.
What do you hear from the citizens?
Mostly positive. I haven't heard any really negative at all. There was a couple of people unhappy we didn't get to Main Street. They understood it. There were some questions as to why we didn't finish Valley Road this year, and they understood it, but most of it's been all positive.
I mean, it's not like we're going to leave it, we're going to get through it. It's just timing.
Yeah, I think it was disappointing. The gentleman I talked to on Valley Road was just disappointed. We had some weather problems this year with the paving company. We gave them a lot of paving. They had a lot of paving to do with other towns this year, and we shortened the job up a little bit, both for our schedule and their schedule. And we left the 3,000 feet, because that's about a day's worth of grinding for them in prep work. And we'll be in and out of there pretty quick next spring. There's not a lot to do in that second half.
When you think, I mean, I know it's all weather dependent, but are we talking May? Are we talking...
Yes. Yep. We'll be done, if we have a normal winter, we'll be done sweeping the end of May, first of June at the latest. And we'll be in there, I think we'll be about two weeks, two and a half weeks. And they'll be in right behind us. So I'd like to see the end of May, first of June.
So that's the bond money you have?
Correct.
That's the bond money you have, another $973,000. Looking beyond next year, have you started projecting other needs?
I have not. That's coming up in this budget season. I have not. We've got, we've got the pavement management. We've got to go around here pretty quick and start gathering the information for that. We've got a couple of projects that I've got an idea where we're going to go. We're actually banking that money right now. We're spending a little bit of it on, on small jobs that weren't set aside for the bond money for the big projects, but I don't know where financially we'll be heading forward from that point yet.
So in the, in the last five years, you know, we have, what, 46 miles of road?
Yes.
How many miles have we been able to redo?
Oh, jeez. Boy, I don't have that number off the top of my head. Quite a bit. We're getting, we're getting caught up, but at the same time, we're getting caught up. If you go back to, like, Kineska Road was done in 97 and 98. That's getting to a point now, it needs some attention. So we're starting, kind of coming back around on ourselves.
I mean, that's a long time. If you did it in 97, that's 17 years. I mean, that's...
Correct. That's a long time.
Long time to not touch it again.
The state did a few miles?
State did 85 and Egypt Road with their maintenance mulch mix.
That was kind of a crappy job, but...
I was trying to be nice, yeah. I'm going to go with absolute crap.
Honestly, but it was typical state work. In and out, you know, patch it up and make it look pretty.
For the winter.
We'll cross our fingers that 85 holds.
I've got no hope that it's going to. It's already started to fall apart. Egypt Road's started to fall apart.
I told them when they stopped outside of my house across the street, they took a break, and said, "This ain't going to make it. You kidding me? The first snowstorm is going to get tore apart."
I went to every length I could possibly think of to get them to at least fill in the, what they call the delamination spots on 85. I called them potholes. They said they're delams, because if they call them delams, they don't have to come out and fix it. When they pave it with that much of a drop, using that thin of a material, the roller will bridge that. You get no compaction in that. The minute water gets underneath there, the sweat is going to freeze, pop, and there you've got another hole. Now it's 5/8 of an inch thicker than it was last year.
Great. How about on our side, the partners or subs, our vendors that we use to do our work for our roads? Are you happy with those?
Very happy. We've used FR Carroll, I want to say it's going on eight years now, and I've got nothing but great to say about them. They come do what they say they're going to do. We get a good product. I've had one issue where we had a problem, they were out, well, when they did the Plains Road, we had some issues on 85, 85 and what they call graveling. There was, the mix was too dry. They were out the next day, cleaned it up, paved it over, done. That's the only issue I've ever had with them. They do a fantastic job. The people are, their employees are polite. I can't say enough good about it. Best paving company I've ever worked with, as far as road work. And we, we actually enjoyed the cheapest paving costs in Cumberland County this year through the COG bid. We were the lowest.
COG was, or Raymond?
Raymond was, through the COG, in the COG program. Like, three bucks a ton, I think, was the next one up.
So again, layman's terms, how many tons?
Well...
Ish.
Yeah. Like, 1,400 ton will do a mile of road.
1,400 ton?
Ton. Will do about a mile of road on the surface.
And you save three bucks a ton.
Correct.
So 1,400 times 3.
4,200.
4,200 bucks.
Right there.
Right there.
For one mile. All right. That puts it in layman's terms. Thank you, Nate.
No, I, I mean, it's visible around town that the roads are much better than other towns in the area.
I think so, yes.
Who's doing it on the cheap.
Yeah.
I mean, eighty-five was done on the cheap, but that's not our project.
Correct.
And that's what other roads around here look like.
And I think DOT paid in the mid-seventies a ton or eighties a ton, I think is what they said for that material on eighty-five. So they paid more per ton than what we paid for actual material. The guys did a, I, I can't say enough good about our crew. They, they've got it dialed in. They get there, they get the stuff done, they do a great job.
Did you do the Plains Road all with our crew?
Correct, yes, yeah.
You did a really good job on that.
Good job, yeah. Boys do a good job. We hire Rodney Knights for the summer. Uh, we found a long time ago. He's been with us, oh boy, twelve, fourteen, fifteen years. Uh, we can go a lot further, a lot faster with an excavator than you could ever dream of going with a, with a rubber tight backhoe. It's not cost effective for me to rent one, cause I gotta hire somebody to drive it or put one of my guys in it. Uh, Rodney works very well with the crew. The crew works very well with them. They get a lot done in a day. Um, just a good, they've got it dialed in.
Other questions for Nate? Questions from the general public? Comments? Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of the draft letter concerning reasons for RSU withdrawal to be filed with the Commissioner of Education and RSU fourteen superintendent and discussion of a timeline of events. So, as everybody here knows, um, on November fourth, Raymond voted thirteen twenty-four, yes, to nine forty, no, to begin the process of withdrawing from the RSU. Um, uh, this happened in, in the voting box. I think we had eighty, eighty folks who didn't vote or so, some, something along those lines. Um, so now the work begins. I, I tried to work with Sue, um, and with, with Teresa to try to put together a schedule, um, of stuff going forward. The first thing we have to do officially as a board is approve a letter that goes to the department. Um, it goes to the RSU, um, and, um, and is it two letters to the RSU, I think?
Two to the RSU, one to the state.
Yep, one to the state.
Why is it two letters, I guess? Cause on here, looking at this, it's one letter to the superintendent of schools and one letter to the commissioner. That's why I didn't understand why we were going.
I just drafted one a case.
Just, oh, just in case, okay.
Cover all areas.
Yep, I would just say just send one to the schools and I, I guess I'm trying to follow, like I told Danielle on the phone, trying to follow everything on here to the word, to the state.
Okay, so this was my interpretation of what we as a town needed to do after the vote, um, with help. Um, the next, uh, I'll talk about the next next after, but let, let me read to you the letter that was put together by staff, um, with input, um, from all the folks I've mentioned. Uh, James, is it Ryer?
Ryer.
James Ryer Junior, Commissioner of Education, Maine Department of Education, twenty-three State House Station, Augusta, Maine. Re, Raymond citizen petition to withdraw from RSU fourteen. Dear Mr. Ryer, on November fourth, two thousand fourteen, the Raymond residents voted favorably, thirteen twenty-four, yes, nine forty, no, to begin the process of withdrawing from RSU number fourteen. As we understand it, the reasons to withdraw from the RSU are as follows. Inequitable and expired cost-sharing formula, potential for constructing a new middle school with no state funding when an underutilized building exists in Raymond, unbalanced representation on the school board, lack of true consolidation. And then it would be signed sincerely, the select board. So this is step four, five, five, thank you Danielle, um, of the twenty-two steps we've heard about. Um, this letter is open for, um, what I would call editing, if anybody disagrees with what's here, um, or would like to add something. Um, but I think it does meet the minimums of what is asked for in step five. Um, so I open it up for discussion.
I, I agree with three out of the four, but I think the unbalanced representation one, I'm, I'm not exactly sure that's true. I mean, i- it's based on population. One man, one vote, you do the calculation, it comes out to a six-three board. And so, I'm not sure that's actually unbalanced. I mean, unless you're saying that you want equal representation from each town, um, I'm not sure that's possible, cause then you're, you're giving too much weight to minority.
You could, uh, change it, unbalanced representation on the school board, uh, when you factor in the financial contribution.
Teresa?
It's my understanding that we were to put down the reasons why we're withdrawing. And, and there's literally reasons from as minor, but they're not minor, to parents of my kids are not getting snacks when they're going on field to, to these games, to this construction of middle school. It's so wide, it really is. And these are the ones, to me, that were legit. Were legit reasons to, okay, we got, we got some issues here going on. You know, the, I think the unbalanced representation, that is a big issue with people in this town because they feel like they don't have a say and they don't have representation because there's only three people out of six. It may not be that we can change it.
Three people out of nine.
Three people out of nine, sorry, six and three. But it may not be that we can't change it, but not necessarily, because we didn't think we could cha- change that cost sharing when we first started doing this also. State came down, if you remember Joe, with these rules that we had to figure it out this way, we had to break it down this way. And it may be something that we could address and look at, but that is an issue. That is a big issue of people in this town, that they do not have a say on the board. So, so that is, it's a good reason for, for.
I- i- if you do it by the one man, one vote representation as you do in any elected body, it's not unbalanced that way. Yeah, it looks it, that it's a six to three, but it's based on population. That's how it works.
So was the cost sharing and, and it was very unfair, too.
Well, no, but cost sharing, there was a definitive day to look at cost sharing again and, and relook at that. That's all, that was in the consolidation document. This one, I, I just don't agree that it's unbalanced. It's based on population. How else would you do it? You can't just say it has to be equal representation.
I'm not sure how we would do it, but I don't like that. I think all four of them bullet points perfect and they're right on.
I've got a problem with the last.
That's me, though. You know, that's what makes the world go around is different, is different views.
I'm just repeating what people say.
To be a Raymond resident and only have three out of nine votes, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but with the explanation and knowing how they came up with that, that piece does make sense and I still don't agree with it. I'd rather come up with a different formula that favors Raymond a little bit better than three to six.
Three to nine.
Than three guy, than three, three against six, I'd say.
Right.
Cause there's no way the Reamans ever gonna win with three against six.
Exactly.
Sam?
No, I'm, I am agreeing with.
Okay.
With this. Um, I have a problem with the last one.
What is that?
I don't, uh, the lack of true consolidation. I'm not sure what that means.
We are not truly consolidated. We are still us and them. We are still, wait a second, a comment was made that, um, Raymond kids are losing, um, a lot of opportunities because we are not a consolidated school and a brand-new school, was said by Katrina Sangster at one point. We have different teams. We still have different, um, you know, they're doing stuff up here. The computer issue, they took the computers. Uh, there's so many issues that we are not a consolidated school unit. After five, six years, everything should be like combined. Everything should be running. What's going on in Wyndham should be happening here in Raymond and vice versa. And that's what lack of true consolidation is really a and us-them thing still to this day. That's what that means.
You just answered my question.
So, let me, the unbalanced representation on the school board is another way to say that lack of local control? Is it the same thing you're saying? I mean, that's what I heard by, when I was talking to people, is they were concerned we had no local control. We had given up local control. Do you see that the same or different?
Actually, kinda the same, because, because you don't have any. Raymond really does not have a say. They really don't. Um, one of the things the attorney had said at the meeting when he showed up there about the cost sharing was, because we're in RSU, we can do our cost-sharing thing different than, uh, SAU? Is it an SAU, I think it is? Because there's different guidelines and restrictions. So I, why hasn't it been, well, I haven't pushed it either, but why can't we explore the issue as far as the representation on it here, too? But I do agree with that, Mike. I think lack of control, lack of local control, lack of representation on the board is pretty much the same thing to me, to be honest.
I, I'm just looking at a way to edit this that doesn't address the one vote, one, right, which is in the doctrine. However, the concern is we don't have control, which is, I, cause the, the board has to agree to this, cause we're sending the letter, as opposed, as opposed to the committee sending the letter, so.
I mean, when you look at RSUs, ours is only two towns, but you look at RSUs that have six or seven towns in them, they're all representation based on population. It's all done that way. Raymond's never gonna get the majority.
I haven't even started on that fight there, Joe. You know what I mean? That's a whole nother game.
But I, I have a, a problem when you say it's unbalanced representation, when that's not a fact.
But, but it is a fact to people. It really is.
It's a six to three board, yes. That's your problem.
Right.
But it's not, it's not unbalanced based on the population of the two towns.
But it is to the people in the town of Raymond, because they don't feel they have a say, because anything that gets voted on from anything in Raymond is gonna be outvoted by three people, not even, you know, the other three from Wyndham. So, so it's definitely unbalanced.
So do we change it to lack of, so then we just change that line to lack of local control?
Yeah.
And that's fine, yeah.
I mean, you look, look the main legislature. You have, you know, eight representatives in Portland. You have one that, you know, represents half of Raymond and another one represents the other half. That, you know, so Portland's gonna control it because they have more, more population than we do. That's just how it works.
Okay, we, you and I are definitely in agreement. We just need the wording, right? Is what it is. You just don't like the wording.
I just don't like the, it, it, to me, it, it, you're misrepresenting what we really have.
No, I, no.
We don't have as much control as we would like.
Exactly. And I'm okay with that.
My issue with it is it seems, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we pay forty-five percent of the budget and we, and we get half of that amount of say. That don't, that doesn't seem right.
Well, I mean.
That's the fiscal issue.
That, yeah, that's two separate issues there. That funding formula was supposed to be.
Same hand in hand, because most people are voting because of saving them money.
But you saw the new rec- the new recommendation in the funding formula is completely different than what was originally agreed on, because they went back and actually looked at what the funding formula was supposed to be and how often it was supposed to be looked at.
Nice.
It's about time.
Cause you get what you pay for.
Six years later.
Yeah, six years later.
And then they wanna send us out another three years.
That was my issue, is they didn't look at the consolidation document and do what they were supposed to do.
Lack of local say, lack of representation, Joe, is what it comes down to.
Lack of local control. So, for number three?
Yes.
Will you go with that, Teresa?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Joe?
Yeah.
Sam, you, you go with the understanding of?
Yes.
Four, the way it was done? Any other, any other concerns?
No.
So, what I've got here is I've changed unbalanced representation on the school board to lack of local control.
Mm-huh.
Danielle, will, will, if we vote affirmative to send this letter out, Danielle will get us new copies by the end of the meeting and we can sign. Okay. Kind of a motion?
A motion to accept the letter to Jim Ryer and I would suggest just to Sandy Prince and, and take Don Davis's off of there and as with changes regarding withdrawal petition.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, I wanna take a next item out of order slightly. I'd like to do the quick claim deed submitted by Sue Carr, our deputy tax collector for, is it Musson Road?
Musson.
Musson Road. I'd like to take that ahead of, um, item F, which is a tax-acquired property bids, if I could. Who would like to do this? And Sue's not here. Don, is this one yours?
Sure. Attached to the E-packet is a quick claim deed right here without covenant as prepared by Deputy Tax Collector Sue Carr for the property referenced above. Jennifer Dodd Moore, map six fourteen, eight R, zero Musson Road, map, uh, zero six three, lot, uh, zero one, one A, um, which had been listed as part of the tax-acquired property sale. Prior to the, uh, um, bid opening, all back taxes, interest and lien costs were paid and, uh, the parcel, on the parcel through, through April two thousand fifteen, according to policy. So, it is our policy to release the parcel, parcel to the owner of record.
Make a motion to accept a quick claim deed.
Second.
Any discussion questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, five, zero?
Chicken scratch. I have to learn to write my name messier than you guys do.
You don't.
You guys are really bad.
Interesting goal, Teresa.
I know, really. See if I'm just scribble. And then mine's the only one readable.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we'll go to F, consideration of tax-acquired property bids. Danielle, would you like to give us an overview?
Uh, yep. Um, originally, uh, there were five tax-acquired properties listed on the bid document. Um, zero Haskell Ave at map thirty, lot sixteen, zero Bond Street, map thirty-one, lot three, zero Bond Road, map forty-one, lot fifty, zero Harmon Road, map, uh, fifty-three, lot thirty-two, and zero Musson Road, map sixty-three, lot eleven A, which is the, uh, quick claim deed that you just issued. Um.
Hold on, Danielle.
I think you said Bond Road instead of Boulder Road.
Yep.
Both, twice, both times?
Don, just repeat the Boulder Road information.
Uh, zero Boulder Road, map forty-one, lot fifty.
Thank you.
So, um, it's, originally there were five properties listed, however, zero Haskell Ave, map thirty, lot sixteen, was listed in error because, uh, we didn't have it noted in our system that the, um, Conservation Commission had originally asked to, uh, retain this property for conservation purposes and the select board confirmed that. So I've now noted that in the system and removed it and as it happened, we didn't receive any bids for this property. Um, however, we did receive four other bids, two for Musson Road, one for Boulder Road and one for Bond Street. The two for Musson Road were returned, uh, to the senders via certified mail, so that we will know that when they receive them, because the previous prop owners, you know, came in and paid all taxes and lien costs. Um, of the two remaining, remaining.
Hold on, Danielle. The, just, just as a point of clarification, the Musson Road folks paid the day before bids were due.
That's correct.
So it was probably this process.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, well, what had happened is, um.
That's a three acres clarification there. It's right, the three acre one.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, um, what had happened is the, the address that we had had for the, um, property owner was someone who did live in Raymond, but the property had burned. They moved out, didn't give a forwarding address. So then, as we listed this, we sent it out to all the abutters, cause the hope is, is that the abutters will purchase the property and absorb a lot of these non-conforming lots into their own. Um, and what happened is the abutter said, look, I know, I know this girl, contacted her, had her contact the town and, um, basically.
But that brings you back to the process is what triggered the payment.
Well, yes, exactly. So they say it was, the, originally it wasn't, the owner didn't even know they owed, owed the taxes. So that, that's how we were able to find them, yes. And then, uh, it turns out that butter is going to purchase that property, cause he wants to retain his buffer, so.
That's good. I mean, it's, you know, to get the stuff paid and, and not have it to go out, that's great. And, and to have it paid one day prior to the, the bid being in there, you understand why other people bid it, why we did get bids on it. There was interest. Um, and as part of the process, you know, it was paid prior to, you know, the deadline for the thing. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit as to, as to explain, you know, how that got taken off and, and the positive nature at which it was paid. So, thank you, Danielle.
Yeah, uh, so of the two remaining, we have one for zero Boulder Road in the amount of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is fifteen point seven four, four percent of the assessed value at, um, twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then we have another one for zero Bond Street in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which is fifty-eight point three one percent of the assessed value at, um, thirty-four thousand three hundred.
Was that a typo? Deposit two hundred instead of two thousand?
No. He only sent a two hundred dollar check versus two thousand.
Does he know that?
We, we don't contact the, the bidders, you know, to, you know, to, cause you could always choose to reject the bid because of a lack of a deposit. However, he'll have to pay the full amount anyways upon closing. So it's, you know, it's up to you for consideration.
Just in a big hurry, I just.
Forgot a zero?
Yeah.
Forgot a zero.
Um, Danielle, which, could you tell us?
You can't forget that.
You meant to bid all two thousand.
Oops, either way, right. Um, Danielle, could you tell us the taxes owed on those two properties? Danielle, could you tell us the taxes owed on those two properties?
Uh, for zero Boulder Road, it is three thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Well, actually, I should back up for a second. Both of these are town owned properties. They were acquired some time ago, so they have no new taxes from the last time this update was given, added on to them or interest. Everything kind of freezes because it's now town owned. So going back, zero Boulder Road is three thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents and zero Bond Street is eight thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. At the time of closing, not only will the balance of whatever the bid, if accepted, will be due, but also they'll need to pay for the, the state transfer tax as well.
So, in anticipation of questions, I asked Chris to put a usage for these two lots so that we would have that in our packet. So if you scan down one page in your packet, you'll see that what the uses are, potential uses of these two properties. The reason that I asked was specifically, I think, for the, the smaller of the lots. I was curious what could be done with a point one two acre lot, which is the Boulder Road lot. That was my curiosity. So, I thought that that should be part of our consideration in whether or not we were going to accept a bid or not. So, Chris is also here if we have questions about what he wrote.
Bonnie? Wouldn't we always try and see at least fifty percent of it? Is that what we, is that, was that our number before?
We can come up with that before. We had such a big discussion about it.
As everyone else is like ten percent.
It's, it's not an official policy.
No, we just kind of look and see what the land use was and stuff like that and see what we want.
But I do think, Lonnie, you know, our hope is, our goal is, and I think we had one last time that was, was rejected because it didn't meet that gut check.
Fifty percent of the taxes or fifty percent of the land value?
The assessed value.
The assessed value.
And it might be that we want to look at putting that into our policy at some point, a percentage, but it doesn't allow you to look at everything, condition of property. And, and I think one of the things that was brought up is what if something has happened on the property and there's a lot of cleanup? Would you need fifty percent of the value if there was going to be a lot of money put into cleanup? Or would you make the, make the deed, deed restricted that the cleanup had to be part of it within X time?
No, this loses flexibility.
It gives us a little more flexibility, which is one of the reasons I asked for this explanation here.
Yeah, I think this is very helpful, by the way.
I do too, yeah.
So.
Is there a recommendation from Chris or on whether these are decent bids on these properties?
I don't have a recommendation. I can tell you that the Boulder Road property is roughly fifty feet wide without having a survey done. Setbacks of twenty feet on each side, that leaves you ten feet.
That's a small house.
You're not going to build it. It's a non-buildable law.
Yeah.
And the person that put, that put a bid on it, is he an abutter?
I don't believe so.
No, I checked that and he's not.
Probably has access to the water. You could park an RV there, a registered RV with a campsite permit for ninety days. So it has some value. The other lot on Bond Street is two lots that have been combined, two non-conforming lots. This is enough buildable area with a soils test and if it has water, probably it's a buildable lot. The problem with this lot is it's on a paper street. Doesn't have confirmed private road, road frontage. Whether I could issue a building permit on it or not, I don't have enough information in front of me to make that determination without an application. I would say it's probably a buildable lot with some hassle. Does that help?
I mean, does this person who bid on it know that? They know the restrictions?
He came in and, and.
Talked about it.
Yep.
I mean, I'll make a motion to accept the bid on Bond Street. I think we ought to do them one at a time.
I think that's a good way to handle it.
Second.
So we're, we have a motion and a second for Bond Street. It is map thirty-one lot three. The bid is twenty thousand dollars, which represents fifty-eight and change percent of the assessed value. This is the one that does not have a ten percent deposit. If, you know, if, if there were other questions that could, you know, allow it to be kicked out, we can also accept it, I believe. Other questions on Bond Street, concerns, suggestions?
I just want to make sure the bid was actually twenty thousand.
Yep.
In writing, I see it. Dawn?
I would say, I would say that's easily waivable irregularity, math error.
I think you got confused.
Confusion.
Because it says you can give ten percent of your bid or two hundred dollars, whichever is greater. You must have missed that.
I think it's, I think it's a misunderstanding. I think it's a good bid. I would waive that irregularity and accept the bid. Sorry.
Do we see any, with the options that this person has, knowing that he's not an abutter or anything, do we see any issues arise from this?
What type of issue are you talking?
Him putting a, an RV on that property for a little while. Is it, I'm just trying to get a feel for.
No, I don't see it.
Issues. You know, I mean, to me, he's getting, he would get a pretty good deal for what he has, but again, just trying to make sure that we're not granting something that would create a horror show for us in the future in some way.
Yeah, we're not making guarantees. It's all required because Kurt would have to, Chris would have to issue a campsite permit and they'd have to apply every single year, so.
I thought we were talking about Bond Street.
Right, but if, that you could use either for camping.
Right, but the, the idea is that the immediate abutters were notified, they had an opportunity to bid. And so, I mean, to answer your question, anything's possible. You could have an issue, an issue, you could have that or not. But, you know, the town has an obligation to collect the taxes that were unsuccessful in that with the previous owner. So this is the process that's employed. There are, there are no guarantees that there'll be harmony, but there was notice and due process. And so, so therefore, we would have to deal with any issue like that if it arose. And that's, that's the way that happens.
But if we made the mistake one year, we wouldn't have to necessarily make it again next year, the next year, because they'd have to get another permit for the, for the next year.
No, I'm saying there can be no guarantees on when you issue a bid, just like if somebody buys a lot, there can be no guarantees.
Kind of beyond that.
Okay.
I'm saying, yep, because it's getting ready to vote, so I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
No, I don't see any issues. They've got to come in and apply for permits like any other landowner and they're going to be held to the same standard.
Questions, comments, further? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously, Bond Street.
I'll make a motion to accept a bid on Boulder Road.
I'll second that.
Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Also unanimous. So, we did not get a bid on Harmon?
No, but there may be an issue with that one as well, so.
Okay, then.
Hopefully that one will be gone as soon as, I'm waiting to hear from someone's legal counsel as to whether or not they own it.
All right, great. Thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome.
Do they own it or do we as a town own it?
Well, we technically, we own it, but then what will happen is a transfer happened where someone purchased a bunch of parcels at auction and he thought that he owned it. So he, but based on the deed, I can't see that, so.
So if he can come up with sufficient legal evidence, there may be a reconsideration of that property.
He'll come and pay it.
But he's going to have to show us that some, that he has.
For the next.
Right.
Right.
As we've done in the past, a few months, I guess I ought to clarify, we moved public comment ahead of our executive session because we need to use this room for executive session. I decided, as I dealt with the cold weather on the way in here tonight, that I'm also going to move selectmen comment and town manager report ahead of the executive session. And I will do that going forward as well so that we can have all of the public information handled in the meeting prior to any executive session. So, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Or anybody from the public would like to speak? Louise?
I'd just like to put my two cents worth in on your comments about the RSU.
Can you introduce yourself, Louise?
I'm sorry, Louise Lester Tenheartley-Lamb.
Thank you.
As far as the representation, I don't think our problem so much is with the RSU, but with the RSU law. Joe is absolutely correct. I mean, we have to go by the law, that's what the law was, doesn't mean we have to like it. And I think that is my concern with this and why I would like to get out of the RSU. If we can't have equal representation, I don't care how big the towns are, then we're put in the backseat and I don't like being in the backseat. The other thing is on the consolidation and the field consolidation. Within the first year, I happened to be talking with one of the school board members and my question to them was, when are you going to change the name of the school? And he said, what do you mean? And I said, well, presently it's Wyndham High School. And I said, when are you going to change the name? You're now a, an RSU. And his reply to me was never. And I think that's their attitude and I don't like that either. Thank you.
Thanks, Louise.
Anybody else in the public like to speak? Before you head south? West? To the warmth and we all get jealous?
Frank McGarmitt, McGarmitt Road, Raymond. As much as I hate to say it, Joe is absolutely right on that point.
Thank you, Frank. That must have been painful.
He really has hurt him. You know, whether, you know, this, this is what happens when you have David against Goliath. I mean, you have a big school system and a little school system that join together and it works that way. It's the way America works, basically. And so, that probably will never be changed.
What happens to Goliath?
Well, the Goliath basically is getting out of the, the system. And Louise is right. You know, they've had six years to try to consolidate the RSU. And it's interesting, Wyndham's playing for the state championship in football. It's Wyndham is playing for the state championship.
Wyndham soccer team, too.
Wyndham soccer team also. There has never been any consideration of finding a way to bring both towns together. It's always been Wyndham and those people up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're not in the public.
Okay, I was just going to share an anecdote. No.
Can I, as, do I have to, as a selectman say some things? But since I brought this thing on as a public member, am I allowed to say something in public? Or do I have to go up there or what do you?
You can hold it just for another minute. If you don't mind.
I didn't want to say it as a selectman, though. I can hold it, though.
Then you need to go up there.
I can go up there, but I wanted to make sure it was clear.
We had somebody else.
Yeah, that's why I didn't want to. Sit here. Okay, I'm good. I'll still say it later anyways.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? All right. Selectmen comment. Teresa, you got anything to say this evening?
Me? Wow, I don't know. I did this as the whole RSU thing. I didn't like what I saw and that's why I did something about it. And I, I was good. I kept my mouth shut, sitting here at that public hearing. And, you know, some of the comments that I heard was, get involved, get involved, you got to get involved. But I did get involved. And I got criticized for getting involved, but guess what? I got big shoulders. And I'm really happy with the turnout at the elections because that said a lot, it really did. I'm nervous because it is a big step forward, but I'm getting people to step up, which is good. But I need more people to step up to work on this and you don't need to know a lot, just come help and stuff like that. But I think it's time that Raymond, takes Raymond back and I don't think Raymond's going to lose any opportunities by taking Raymond back either. Raymond's always been a great town, great schools and we have a lot of new parents coming up with kids and young kids and stuff like that. And I think that we're going to start seeing them step forward. I have a mom that's, comes to the daycare that she's got a one and a half year old and she wants to get involved because this is going to be her son's school. So that was really cool to hear. So, that's just my public comment.
Thank you, Teresa. Other, other board members? I did want to say that because the library did their gig tonight, I don't have to do much of a selling gig, but I will remind folks that the capital campaign is still going on. They're close to their goal and it would be a great Christmas gift, I think, to the library if they reach their goal in time. That would be great. So anybody out there that is thinking about charitable giving in the next six to eight weeks as we hit the end of the year, please consider the, the library. I did not get into the further schedule on the RSU, so I thought I would tell board members and, and the public after today. The letter that we approved this evening will go to the state tomorrow and to the RSU by mail as required in state law. Last week, there were ads in the local papers. We did a look for volunteers because at our next meeting, we have to appoint an RSU withdrawal committee. We need a member from the public. We need a member from this board. We need a member from the petitioning committee or group if there is no official committee. And then we need a board member from the RSU that represents Raymond to be the four folks by state mandate. We will approve those folks at our next meeting. At which point, I think this board will be done with its requirements until the working committee, which will be a, a subcommittee of maybe nine to fifteen folks, which we also put an ad out to try to get some folks to give us applications. We will not choose that committee. That will be done by the, that'll be done by the petitioners, but we are helping to gather those interested parties. We did this process the same way we would do a public hearing process as far as notification. I wanted to make sure that this process was handled as openly as, as any other process we would do. So I wanted to let the board know how I had come up with that as a suggestion. And so at our next, our next meeting, we will be figuring out how to make a choice of someone from the public. I'm hoping that the committee will come with a recommendation from, from their ranks and the school board will have forwarded us their recommendation. So we will have to go through applications for a public member and, and look for a member from this group, so. I did want to add that. Anybody else got anything they want to say? Dawn, I'd like you also to, if you could do your report this evening before we head into executive session.
Okay, we'd like to confirm the date for the next regular meeting at December ninth, if that's agreeable to everyone.
Everybody okay with that? December ninth it is.
The, are we good on that? Okay, the town office holiday schedule goes November twenty-seven, twenty-eight for Thanksgiving. We hope everybody has an enjoyable holiday. The community survey is now available, as it has been available. Can be done online, it can be done in hard copy. And so Danielle is the point person for that, if you needed to get a copy or if you need any help with completing an online survey as to how to go about that.
Do we know how many we, we received online?
Online, it's small.
Three fifty.
Yeah, a smaller number. I can get that to you tomorrow. I think we had an update on that actually today by email, but I forget the number.
Four hundred and twenty-six we've gotten in of paper ones already, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great response.
Online, I think it was, it was like maybe thirty some, forty some, it was pretty small.
Now, the next one is, is sharing an anecdote within the realm of communication.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Okay, so in following up to what Louise said, it just struck me that, I hadn't really thought of this, but when I was in a five-town CSD situation, the first order of business of that new entity was to change the name. And they changed the name to a name that didn't reflect any of the towns. And then the other thing that happened was, which I think helped to take some of the sting out of the whole idea of consolidation, was that the new thirty, then thirty-five million dollar school, which was a record in those days, this was, you know, seventeen, eighteen years ago, when you could still build a school for thirty-five million.
still build a school for 35 million, when that new school was built, it was built in one of the smaller towns, which I don't know was a deliberate thing, but it was certainly taken as sort of a sign of we're all in this together, it isn't in the big town.
Thank you, Don.
Interesting, yeah.
All right, can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So, you have to state that.
Well, you have to, yes, you have to actually...
Make a motion under Title I, subsection 405, 6E, to go to executive session to consult with our town attorney and code enforcement officer regarding a pending land use matter. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you all for coming. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm making a motion to allow our code enforcement officer to negotiate a consent agreement and settlement on a land use matter.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Lonnie?
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated 11/18/2014 for the amount of $69,545.27.
Second.
All those in favor?
I also want to make a motion for treasurer's warrant dated 11/18/2014 for the amount of $206,319.13.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?